I call to order this regular meeting of the Monument Town Council, Monday, October 20th. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Erickson, can we take roll, please?
Mayor Lekine.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Here.
Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Fiorito.
Here.
Councilmember Chronic.
Here.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Okay, any disclosures of conflicts of interest?
We haven't received any disclosures.
Okay. Uh, for us, we have our agenda and consent agenda. Any modifications to the agenda? Now I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda and consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. Motion passes seven to zero. All right, first up, ordinance eighteen twenty twenty five, an ordinance adding chapter two dot sixteen dot zero four zero to title two of the Monument Municipal Code concerning corrections of errors. Ms. Hogan. I'm looking for you.
Giving a small section to the town code in relation to powers of the town clerk. Um, what this, if you were to pass this ordinance, it would allow the town clerk to correct scribners errors and um, other obvious clerical errors on ordinances um, in consult, with consultation and only through the consent of the town manager and the town attorney. And um, those corrections would be limited to anything that does not change the intent effect or meaning of any ordinance. Um, the reason this came about is because the most recent ordinance we passed at our last council meeting, we realized that we duplicated the number, so it should have been number seventeen instead of sixteen. So when I asked Bob Cole how we should deal with that, he suggested, you know, putting some language in the ordinance that would allow us to make corrections like those um, from moving forward. Um, there's been maybe out of the, you know, the whole time I've been here, maybe just three times that we've had to bring ordinances back to you. One was, I believe, a misspelling of a owner on some kind of document. But this would also enable us to clean up our code. Like, there's times when statutes are referenced in our code and then the state statute changes. So these would be the types of things that the clerk would then have the authority um, to, to modify and codify. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions for council?
Would, yes, just one, one quick one. Um, you mentioned that this would only happen with the, and it says in there the consent of the town manager and town attorney. Would how, um, how much more work would it be to get like a, in the, in the town manager's report, like a quarterly, hey, these were the, the updates or, or changes that we did through, through using this, um, these powers, if you will.
Oh, well, that would be very easy, but it would be very infrequent. Like I said, the, okay, I've been here for thirteen years and I think we probably would have brought three of them to you.
Okay.
Um, but we could do that.
If they're so frequent, then, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, uh, seeing none, this is a public hearing item. Uh, so we will open up the public hearing um, and see if there's anybody here in the public that would like to speak for or against this uh, modification, this adding a section, chapter two, uh, title two. Anybody online, Will?
There are no hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, uh, then we will close the public hearing and um, bring it back to the council for further discussion or emotion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number eighteen dash twenty twenty five and ordinance ending chapter two, dot sixteen dot zero four zero to title two of the Monument Municipal Code concerning corrections of errors.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. That motion passes seven to zero. Congratulations on your new powers. Don't, don't abuse them, uh, new, new numbering schemes without letting us know. All right, next up, resolution fifty nine twenty twenty five, resolution approving a proposal from the town engineer to update the town's street and pavement design criteria. Mr. Tharnish.
Good evening, council. Tonight, I get two resolutions. Uh, first one tonight is resolution fifty nine to approve a proposal for the town engineer to update the town's street and pavement design criteria. Uh, we had this done quite a few years ago, but since then, we've had updates that we've been wanting to do rather than doing them little by little. We're at the point now where we need the, the new town engineer who's here tonight, Taylor, uh, to update this entire process for us. Uh, they've uh, submitted a proposal, an amount of not to exceed thirty two thousand. And uh, I've attached the um, proposal from them that is shows quite a lot of detail as to what they're actually gonna do. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Don't, um, don't we use Carra Springs Road um, engineering guide?
Uh, we, we've used both uh, Carra Springs for street and pavement in the past, and we've also used them for uh, stone water design manuals and things. Uh, but we're at the point now where uh, we're pretty much are uh, adjusting things that particular to us. And um, it's just good to review these. I mean, Carra Springs does have it. That's kind of where either Carra Springs or Denver were the original people that developed all these, these manuals. Uh, but we're at the point now where uh, this would benefit us a lot more, have it personalized us as far as criteria goes. Okay.
It's back to like twenty ten or twenty twelve?
I don't remember the exact year, but it's been a while. We did a very small update, I think, back in twenty sixteen.
How long was this project take?
I believe it says.
Looks very in depth.
Six months.
Six months?
No more than six months contingent on staff and stakeholder review times. As long as they're less than sixty days, which I would imagine they'll be quite a bit shorter than that.
This is um, being funded through the traffic impact fee fund for part, so is it partial twenty twenty five, partial twenty twenty six?
Uh, yes, this will be because I don't know the, the schedule of how quick they're gonna move to this. So there will be some funding out of twenty six, but we'll, we'll make sure that's uh, covered in the budget. We don't really use a traffic impact fee fund for many things. Occasionally, we always put money in there because things come up. Um, but that's kind of where we're at now.
I, I know this is gonna sound weird, but I'm very much looking forward to reading.
It's not weird at all. That's, that's very cool.
Geek out, I'm gonna geek out over this. Um, all right, any comments or questions from council?
You know, I'm reading over this letter, the five-page letter. I recall in the old town road instruction. Like on the last page, it talked about having many roundabouts. Does this, is this going, is that gonna stay in there as an option for?
I think that's what will be looked at during this process. I, I don't know how it's gonna end up. That's gonna be based upon the town engineer's recommendations.
Are we also, and also with that, are we gonna talk about um, either rumble strips or uh, speed bumps? As well?
Um, yeah, they can look at it. Right now, we don't have speed bumps, but main reason behind that has more to do with um, the uh, snow plowing operations.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I would hope that we don't do those little roundabouts like Silver and Jackson Creek North. Those things are just not working out.
No, there, I mean, uh, you know, there are some, I don't want to say small, but like they're, they're not large ones that are over, like the large ones that are down off of Old Denver Road and Baptist. But there are some, there's a uh, I use the word abundance, but I, that I've seen down in Colorado Springs in subdivisions that seem to really work to help slow down traffic and speeding, especially now that we have uh, more and more people are moving here, more and more, there's gonna be more children walking or riding their bikes to school, that kind of thing. Um, and then we talk about, like you said, the uh, electronic bikes as well coming into play, so.
Well, we're gonna be the ones that have to adopt it, so.
Yes.
My, my guess is, is you're gonna have fair chance to review and provide input. Um, and if there are sections that are missing that you feel are necessary to be reviewed, I would say that you should probably start gathering some of that you want and feed it up to Tom so that the engineers, I mean, I just got a couple emails um, about your side of the town and the speeders um, asking for more signage, more, more speed limit signs and more police presence. Um, and so I know that they're, they're looking at it. I don't know how we, I don't know how we get people to slow down, but it's not a monument issue. It's a, it's a, it's a state thing. Just speed here. Okay, um.
But if you look at the breakdown for what they're gonna cover under street design technical criteria, there is a section in there on cul-de-sacs, eyebrows, knuckles, and so on. But it's a pretty detailed list.
Another thing I'm interested in, I mean, the line of sight I saw in here. As an example, I mean, if you uh, turn left just prior to the car wash on Jackson Creek Parkway, you actually have to pull it out a little bit to see because of the shrubs that are there, the tall grass that, you know, so. Anyway, okay, thanks.
One quick question, and probably for Dan, but um, is, do we have any connection with the comprehensive plan while we're going through this process? Is that, is one gonna feed off of the other?
Uh, but they're gonna be happening at the same time. Uh, I'm sure we, uh, it's, there's potential that we'll have um, something that'll come out of the comprehensive plan at the end that we'll have to, we'll work with the engineer to, to update the, the standards. Uh, but we will be looking at traffic calming, the traffic calming and traffic safety and other updates that are absolutely necessary in, uh, compared to our current standard, uh, to bring this, to have this new, this new standard set for us. So, uh, Councilor Kimpel, thank you for bringing that up. That's, uh, those are certainly things we're gonna be looking at as part of this standard book. And I, I did just check with Taylor before I opened my mouth, so he's like, yeah, we're doing that, so.
Was, was there something else you wanted to add? Yeah.
Uh, I know that, that, that actually, I just wanted, um, when, uh, Councilor Kimpel was talking about traffic calming and speeders and so on, those are things, those are all parts of a good, uh, a good road, uh, road design standard, so we'll be looking at all those.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Okay, um, then I will look for a motion on fifty nine twenty twenty five.
I'll make a motion, approve resolution fifty nine twenty twenty five, a resolution approving a proposal from the town engineer to update the town streets and pavement design criteria.
Second.
Motion in a second. That motion passes seven to zero. Sixty twenty twenty five, Mr. Tharnish?
Okay, resolution sixty again is a proposal from the town engineer to provide engineering and design services for the Public Works Site Development Project. Uh, re, in reality, what this is, 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 it's sometimes called just, uh, phase one. It's the first time we're gonna actually uh, put a structure there, even though it's a, it's not a building, it's not a public works facility itself. It's gonna consist of a uh, carport-looking structure, which we've been talking about for several years, where we can relocate a majority of our heavy equipment out there and run power to that so that anything that's, that runs off diesel can be plugged in during the winter. Uh, we'll have a fence, um, more of a solid-looking fence along Mitchell Avenue. And then it'd be chain link around the other sections, which wouldn't be visible uh, as you drive by. And then also there's some um, storage or kind of uh, concrete structures where we would store material and um, the additional salt sand shed. Uh, design and engineering costs not to exceed one hundred and twenty one thousand five hundred. And then it will uh, most likely be done, I think somewhere in this, talks about being done in December. And by that, we mean it'll be ready uh, to go to a construction bid. I would, I wouldn't imagine construction could start until next April or May, depending on when the ground unfreezes. And um, again, this is one of those projects that's been a long time coming. Uh, we needed to get engineers involved just because of the structure uh, support of the roof and snow load and things like that. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Uh, I guess my first question is, um, I, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of the, the, the funding not being specific to where it's coming from. Um, can, can we get some more specific, specific names of the funds that's going to fund the hundred and twenty one five?
Yes, uh, I thought I had made that change in there. It's a.
I'm looking at the memo. In the memo, it doesn't. Okay. Okay.
There's really, there's really, in this year's budget, there was uh, three funds that were allocating money towards this. Uh, there's a little piece of it. The smallest portion would be the general fund. The other two are the two-way and the enterprise fund because it's a shared facility that both water department has a lot of heavy equipment also that would utilize this space, same for material storage and so on.
All right, thanks. I was just going through the memo as you were, I hadn't read the resolution.
On the page three of the letter, just to get clarification, uh, closeout warranty, it says complete eleven-month warranty walk and then complete twenty-three-month warranty walk.
I believe that is uh, once the, the drawings are completed, there's typically warranties that come with whenever you build a structure. And we develop usually uh, punch lists that come out of those, whoever the constructor is. And the engineers are on board of that because the punch lists would uh, need to go through both staff and the engineer to resolve any outstanding discrepancies. So there's um, what they built into this is again, eleven-month and a twenty-three-month. Now, why they're not twelve or twenty-four, I mean, that's probably a question for Taylor, but.
That was my next question.
Um, and this is just drawings, right? This is not.
Yes, this is just uh, design and engineering, no construction.
Is it, is this inclusive of what I'm expecting to be a highly alarmed and secure facility with cameras that are?
We do have plans as staff to install cameras there, but that would not be part of this contract.
You, you wouldn't have them drawn in to show sightlines and things of that nature?
Uh, it's not part of this particular phase, but we will um, once we, you know, part of this is gonna install a gate off of Mitchell Avenue. And the gate will be controlled by staff through code. The um, actual cameras, uh, I know, like, for example, water department has installed a majority of uh, security cameras on all our facilities. We have internal staff that are familiar with that. And I, when we get out to uh, moving equipment over there, we'll uh, we'll make sure that we have adequate coverage from multiple cameras. It will be covered.
So does this, does this um, engineering take the whole site into account? I mean, so that we don't have to double up on that when you.
I, I think there's a, just a preliminary look around when we were out there, but this doesn't cover any other uh, like move, movement of desert, uh, other than the storm drainage. The storm drainage will have to be designed uh, as if it's gonna go to a full build-out because the detention pond is gonna be located on the southwest corner. So it has to be sized appropriately to catch all the future stormwater drains that come down.
So you just, you'll estimate the impervious service that you think it will be when it's finished? Cause it'll probably be close to a hundred percent impervious anyway, right? I would assume.
When, when, uh, when the whole uh, public works facility and the additional building, yeah, everything will be impervious.
Okay, so you're gonna size it for that at this, at this stage of the game? I'm just trying to see, I'm just trying to make sure we're not like doubling up later when you go down and and do a building, whatever we can cover at this particular juncture.
No, I think, I think we're at the point where we're gonna design as much as we can that we know is gonna collect down on that one corner, so there'll be uh, there'll be a site layout plan developed that'll show uh, drainage from basically all locations. It's all gonna drain to that corner just by gravity.
Right.
Just cause the way it slopes.
Okay. Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, then, um.
Yeah, I wanted to respond to your question about the eleven-month warranty and twenty-three-month. Um, we, we typically do the eleven-month and twenty-three-month, so contractor has time to uh, make any corrections based on those warranty walks prior to the twelve-month and twenty-four-month periods.
I just wanted to double check.
Yep, good question.
Clarification.
Yep, thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else, no other questions or comments, I'll look for a motion.
I move to approve resolution number sixty dash twenty twenty-five, resolution approving a proposal from the town engineer to provide engineering and design services for the Public Works Site Development Project.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Erickson. Motion passes seven to zero. Next up, uh, sixty-one twenty twenty-five, resolution to approve preliminary insurance quotes for both workman's comp insurance and property and casualty coverage for the town of Monument.
Good evening. How's everyone doing?
Hello, Emily. Hi, Emily.
It's been a little while since I've been here, so nice to see everybody. Uh, tonight, I would like to request approval of the resolution to approve the preliminary quote for our workers' comp and property insurance through CERSA. Uh, we have used CERSA for a number of years. Uh, they also work with two hundred and ninety-three communities and public agencies throughout Colorado. Um, I did attach two items for review. Uh, one is the workers' compensation insurance. Um, if you note, it did go down from the year prior. Um, that is for the removal of fourteen positions that were accounted for, so we do have a little bit of a decrease within the workman's comp. Uh, but within the property casualty, it did increase just a little bit. Um, but we did, uh, myself, as well as the finance department and team, reviewed all the deductibles, all the assets. Uh, we did adjust the deductibles for certain items that were wiser to be able to just replace completely versus being covered by a very low deductible. So we adjusted that as well. Um, this is just a preliminary quote that we provide for CERSA to continue to provide us that final quote before we do the signing to start that twenty-six year.
I know this is a um, I think I know the answer to the question, but are there any alternatives to CERSA?
Not that would be worth pursuing. Um, they, since we do have both insurances through CERSA, we do receive a discount. If we were to leave and possibly split from them, it could be quite a bit more.
That's what I suspected. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it?
Any questions?
Oh, Ms. Patrick's not here, so we can't. Biggest line item.
The biggest line, biggest line item.
Yeah, but that is a very important line item.
I, I, I appreciate all the work that you guys put into this. I'm trying to get those rates down. Uh, it's, it's, um, you guys looked in the right areas from what I can tell.
And just um, to add on to that, counselor, is about six months in, they do an audit. So if we do have adjustments where we have the removal of a couple more positions or, or folks within the town, they do the six-month, reevaluate the position count. If we do have less, we do receive a refund for that amount, so it could be lower as well.
Do we get a good driver's discount?
I wish.
There's no good drivers, is what she's saying.
No.
Looking to see if there's any discount you're missing. All right, I mean, we, it's not like we can not have this insurance. So, who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, uh, to approve resolution number six one dash two zero two five. A resolution to approve preliminary insurance quotes for both workers' compensation insurance and property and casualty co, coverage for the town of Monument.
We have a motion and a second. That motion passes seven to zero. All right. Public comments. Individuals attending in person may raise their hand to indicate their desire to comment. Individuals attending via Teams may raise their hand digitally to comment via connected devices. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments. Comments are limited to three minutes. Is there anybody in town hall that would like to make a public comment? Anybody? Oh.
Wait, wait.
Haley. Come on down.
Oh.
Good evening, councilmembers. Haley Chapin with TriLakes Cares. Just wanted to take a moment to invite you all and any of the community members um, for an event that we have coming up in November. One of the things under the strategic imperatives of TriLakes Cares is to help educate the community, um, raise awareness for the work that we do, the community that we serve and the sector that we're in. We are putting on a screening at Library Twenty-One C on November fourteenth to host a screening of the movie Uncharitable. It's put a movie that was based off of a book, which it was based off of a TED Talk that went viral years ago by Dan Pilata. And it basically talks about the intersection between the nonprofit sector and the philanthropy sector and the struggles that are faced and how the two groups end up working together. And it will really help to raise awareness uh, about this intersection and about how people think about charity when they make their contributions. So we think it's very timely going into the holiday season when a lot of people are making year-end contributions, so wanted to share that invite with you all if you happen to be free. Again, it will be on November fourteenth. Doors will open at two thirty and the program will run from two forty-five to five. We'll be having a screening of the movie first and then we'll have a panel discussion. It's being co-hosted by TriLakes Cares, Homeward Pike's Peak, and Catholic Charities. These three organizations are working in a pilot program right now, a collaborative about how our organizations can help support each other and navigate difficult uh, times with all the changes that are happening at the federal level impacting our organizations. So we're gonna co-host it, have the screening, and then have a, a panel of question-answer for how that information and is hitting here local in our community, so invite you all. And I would be happy to share some handouts with you later. There's also a, an invite on our new website that just went live, so if you haven't had a chance, please go check it out. Um, we just released a, a new vision and a new logo, and there's a lot of changes coming about, so. Thank you.
Real quick, what was that TED Talk?
Um, I can send you the link. It's. It's called The Way We Think About Charity Is Dead Wrong. And it's all about the overhead myth. I'd be happy to send out a link to the video. It's, it's about a 19 minute TED Talk and it is very, very interesting and moving and so.
And this is being held where?
At Library 21C.
Before, before you take off, how is the, the government shutdown affecting you? Is it affecting you?
Yeah. Three different ways. It is impacting us both with potential funds that are drying up or not being funded in the coming year. It is impacting us because we know that there will be no more neighbors seeking our services, especially for food. If food stamps or SNAP benefits do not continue come November 1. And then the tertiary effect is really organizations like Care and Share and others that we rely upon for that food. And their sources are drying up, which means that we're going to get less product from them and then we will have less to supply to the community. So we're bracing for the perfect storm at the moment. I was actually talking to our director this morning about trying to run some reports about how many neighbors that are seeking our services are currently getting SNAP benefits? Because we know that those will for sure be impacted if they get no SNAP benefits. To the tune of what dollar amount are they going to have removal of financial support? And then be relying on organizations like ours? And then there's probably families out there that have SNAP and that keeps them from coming to us because they are able to use that assistance to make ends meet on their own. And if they don't get that, we surely feel that they'll be coming our way. So unfortunately, time will tell. We're trying to be as proactive as we possibly can. But the biggest focus right now is on the food and security part and what happens come November 1st.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The new logo looks great, by the way.
Yeah, the new logo is definitely cool. Anybody online, Will?
Race Mayor.
Okay.
Then we'll move on to future agenda item authorization. And you don't have one. Okay, wow, see what happens when Madeline.
I don't, I don't have authority.
Oh, what you, oh, they need to change your title.
Oh, I didn't want him to.
Okay.
I don't want to put anything on the agenda and then have Madeline come back and I'll get in trouble.
All right, next up are a slew of reports. Feel free to make your way down or wherever you're seated. And we will go through the reports.
I have the first one. So this is the monthly town manager's report. Madeline likes to just highlight a couple of things of interest. Reports, I think, always very comprehensive and provides the council and the community with a lot of really good information of what the staff worked on in the prior month. From an IT perspective, I just want to highlight the cybersecurity awareness. This is so incredibly important and, you know, our IT department and our contractor can do everything possible. But we are the weak link. We are the users and we are the weak link. And we do not want to be that community that gets hacked. And so really appreciate Will's efforts to continue to remind us to be thoughtful, not to click, not to open things that we don't recognize. So he's just pummeling that into our heads and it is greatly appreciated. I also noticed that he continues to look for savings for the town, which is greatly appreciated. He just recently identified another $16,000 savings through some changes in the use of a certain software program. So we really appreciate that. We are continuing as a team to look at our, our service level reductions, taking on the duties of the wonderful six people that are no longer employed with the town. This is a pretty heavy lift. And we knew that there would be things that we forgot or things that we wouldn't remember or whatever the case may be. And so we're certainly missing those individuals and finding ways to be able to take on the work that they left behind for us. We're also working on strategic objectives, met again with a consultant and we'll be bringing those to you on November 10th. We scheduled that special meeting for human resources and finance. Finance, you know, we're all things budget. We'll be coming to you on November 3rd. That budget presentation will be focused on numbers. So the pretty part of the budget will come to you the second meeting in November. But the first part is, is going to be hardcore numbers and we're going to go through what the budget looks like and presenting some options for you to discuss as we try to balance the 2026 budget. We've had another meeting of the Citizen Service Levels Advisory Committee. We just thank that group so much. The commitment that they're making to show up and to engage and to learn about the town and to give their feedback is really helpful as we go through this process. PD is always busy. Officer Rifles out there doing a lot of things. We have a trunk or treat on October 30th, the day before Halloween. So we want to support that and be able to go out and donate some candy and be part of our community. She'll be at a couple of different events for.
Stop at that one. Is that the one that's at Lewis Palmer Elementary?
Yes, yes.
So I sent that out to the council.
Yes.
I am expecting you all to show up in a costume. If I'm going to be there in costume, you will have to be there in costume. You're lucky you won't be here. You're, you are the lucky one. But so we'll have one officer and a vehicle.
Yes.
They, they did ask for a piece of equipment. I don't know if that's even possible.
We'll talk, Lori and I are working on, Lori will be there. It's her, her neighborhood, her area, so she's happy to be there and will be donating candy as well. So we'll talk to Public Works and see if that's possible. It's over time, it's right, getting the equipment there, getting the equipment back, I know.
And then there's a safety thing.
I know, right?
We've got to watch, watch little kids climbing on a piece of equipment, so.
So anyway, we're working on some details.
Okay.
We'll do what we can.
All right. Between now and then, if you could email council, what, what you guys decide is final plan.
All right.
And we will all be there with bells on if we can be there on the 30th.
Okay. We will do that.
Go ahead, say it.
Skip the bells.
Skip the bells. Okay.
Planning is continuing to work on Monument 2040. So lots of things happening there. The cardiograph program, we talked about that during the budget preliminary discussion. Work continues on that. We think that's going to be a really helpful tool, tool moving forward. So we have a team working on that and, and making really good progress. If you haven't gotten your zombie hunting permit yet, please do that. You can find that online. We, we installed the new restrooms at Monument Lake. We have a ribbon cutting for that coming up in November. So we look forward to seeing everybody there. That's a really important thing. And just a note, I mean, Public Works does so much, it's hard to, you know, you just, they, they're out there all the time. But just notable that how important it is to clean out the storm drains before the storms come. It saves a lot of flooding. It's a safety issue and so just really thank them for keeping those storm drains clean. They had another water main break. It broke around 3:00 and they were done by midnight. So again, just a great, great job by that crew. And I thought this was really interesting that they collaborated with the Department of Natural Resources to inspect the Monument Lake Dam and the drain pipes using a robotic camera and everything was found to be in good condition. So I thought that was good news.
That's great.
There you have it.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Well done, as always. Now we get to the fun stuff.
Yes, you do.
Ms. Young.
Taking an opportunity to give you a sales tax update on self-collecting. You can see the numbers. So these are the numbers. We had a big lift this third and fourth month of the year because of catching up with some delinquent accounts and businesses still learning the process that we're self-collect. As much of an effort as we put forth to inform everyone the best way we could, we're still getting notifications of folks who did not know of the change. So we continue to work on that, chipping away as best we can. You'll see the dip for August, although sales tax is lower, it is a trend. So last year, same exact. We factor that in towards, you know, back to school. Although we have a couple of retail locations here. You know, we feel that probably folks tend to do more online shopping and perhaps go to maybe the bigger malls, Castle Rock, other places that unfortunately our town does not provide. So you'll see that we completed two successful audits, caught up two years of sales tax with those two businesses successfully. One brought in $58,000, the other 32, 32,000 of back taxes. So that's a win for the town. Something that we feel is lends to us being self-collected, that we now have the ability to do that. We have one ongoing audit that we're close to resolving. And just for your general awareness, the audit is, is a pretty detailed process. We do, we request however many years of returns. Typically, they're paper copies, so we then have to put those into the spreadsheets. We analyze them, compare them to what the state has provided us. And then we go back and ask for samples of receipts that they provide. So it is a bit of a tedious process and Sophia is doing a great job of that. We sent some delinquency notices at the end of August. We collect, three of those businesses are now current. We have identified a couple in-town businesses that are still delinquent. So Sophia will come down next, no, this Thursday. And we together will hit the pavement and visit those offices. The unfortunate thing is a lot of those companies are corporate. So we'll go to the local store and they point us in the direction of corporate. But we feel that showing up in person will ideally provide a little bit additional attention that we can get. And then we continue to appreciate the reports. It is nice. So next year, we will really see the benefit of self-collecting because we'll have the comparative data in GOVOS that we don't have currently. Next slide. One change that we've made with the help of Tina. I'm now included in the business license process. So as new businesses apply for business license, I then have their email or contact information. I reach out and we're proactive now with getting them set up. So that's super helpful. There is a statewide SUTS issue. I don't know if you've received any information on it, but it's our so we have GOVOS as our electronic format and then SUTS is the other mechanism for filing electronic returns. It's through the Colorado State, it's Colorado State Use Tax System. And every municipality is feeling the pain of some kind of a computer issue. No one has really come forth to explain what the problem is. But essentially, we receive payments, but the returns are not being filed. And so we systematically send out delinquency notices and really they've paid and it becomes a whole reconciliation process. Many complaints from our businesses and statewide. And unfortunately, our hands are tied in terms of us being self-collect for the town. We're trying to be patient and we reach out as best we can. And then finally, regarding sales tax, we continue to receive back taxes through the DOR system. So Department of Revenue is still monthly reporting us and you can see those numbers down below. So any questions?
Yeah, so, because I brought a couple of examples up about big businesses that I've interacted with, that I'm very, very sure they do more than $100,000 worth of business in the state, which is the, the demarcation line, if you will, for collecting local sales tax. How are we going to get those people wrapped in to start paying their sales tax to us, at the very least? When they're too small not to be doing that much business in the state and they're, they're not, they're not paying it. They collect state, they collect county, but they're not collecting municipal.
It's very hard. I mean, that's the, that's one of the challenges that we have is if it's an out-of-state business and it's selling into our community, trying to identify that. I think we followed up. I'll, we'll have to look at the records. I know that you gave us one or two referrals and so I believe that's on our to-do list.
One is absolutely massive, publicly traded company. So.
Do you feel that they're not withholding the tax or they?
They're not charging.
They're not.
They're not charging the tax. So when you see the, the tax and you reconcile it against an address that's published in, in the state tax tool. It's missing three and a half percent. That equals Monument.
I'll see Sophia on Thursday so I can ask her.
Yeah, just be, I just want to make sure we're getting what we're, what's due.
Well, yeah. But unfortunately, if they're not collecting it, there's nothing for them to omit. So.
Right.
If we audit them, it'll.
But they have a state law that they have to follow. I don't know what the other states are like, but I think other states follow suit ever since.
It's in our code, if they're doing business here, they should be.
Right, ever since Congress passed online purchases are taxable, they should be following those state rules and they're not, they're not following ours.
Yeah, we'll have, I'll be happy to talk to Sophia about it on Thursday.
So you've been doing this now for a while? Do you still think it's worth it?
I mean, it's a loaded question, but yes, I think the town.
The loaded question, the loaded question is we, we, we weren't really sure how much it would benefit. So rather than just say what I said, is it benefiting us to do this still?
I think you meant that is the man hours.
I know it's a lot of extra work, but is it, is it bringing in what you consider to be extra?
I don't know that it's bringing in extra to what the expectation was at this point. But it gives us, I think, more authority to reach out to these businesses that we didn't have before. So.
Because the state wouldn't allow us to.
Right. And so prior to us being self-collect, the method of trying to do research on a business as we'd reach out to our one contact with the state and it had to be Steve because he was the only appointed contact for the town. And then I think there were three people who were answering all of the questions that were. And so it was just waiting months. Whereas now we have the ability and the authority to reach out directly. So it is, I think, a little bit more efficient. But like I said, next year we'll realize more of the benefits because we'll have that comparative data in our software.
Sure.
Whereas now we're still building that.
Kind of guessing, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, I'll just keep asking the same question just to make.
Yeah, please do.
I just want to make sure that we're, we're doing the right thing and.
Sure.
And, you know, not just creating a bunch of extra work. So, but if it, you know.
I mean, it is time consuming, I'm not going to deny that, but I know where we're at and it would be unfortunate to put businesses through another change.
Sure.
So.
Well, I like, I like the part that you, you know what's really going on. I mean, that part's the best part. So, but, you know, hopefully it gets a little bit easier as, as time goes on.
Well, and I can tell you it has gotten easier because we've worked out all or I'll say not, maybe not all, but the majority of the software issues we were having. There were lots of bumps in the road with the software itself. And I think most of that has even, it's even itself out. Although there is the SUTS program, which we have no, we have no access to fix that or even get involved in that because that's a state issue. So yeah, I hope that this time next year, it'll be very positive. Yeah, good all the way around.
Thank you, Lori.
Sure. And I'm staying here for my next presentation.
Next.
Which is the 2025 budget updates. I know you guys see the monthly reports that we put, or Steve puts together. So what I'm going to provide is basically a summary of all those. So what I'm going to provide is basically a summary of all those year-to-date. My information here is through September. And so the, the first slide will show revenues. This is generally general fund. And so because we're three-quarters through the year, that last percentage column, you want to, you know, compare that against seventy-five percent. These seventy-five percent would be right on target. So like you'll see the property tax, which is a good thing, we're over budget. So I'm happy to answer questions. I.
Yes, none.
No? I can tell you, like the other revenue section, we are still getting in bag fees. Surprisingly, year-to-date, we've received thirty thousand dollars of bag fees, so. Yes.
That's, what is that, thirty, that's three thousand bags?
Yeah. So every quarter we're getting, yeah, big checks, so it's something that we're not budgeting for because it's, but it's still happening, so we're happy to, happy to take it.
We have to tell.
The other things, there's, you know, the police extra duty, there's fees for service, there's some, we've sold off some old equipments, scrap metal, there's a variety of things in that other revenue category.
That bag fee is a quarterly payment? Thirty thousand a quarter?
No, year-to-date, thirty thousand.
Year-to-date, thirty thousand.
It's a pleasant surprise. Yeah.
Get my bags cheaper on Amazon and then the tax goes to the town. Just don't get the bag fee.
Yes, next slide. The next slide, you'll see the year-to-date summary of expenses for the general fund. So it lists out all the departments in the general fund. I can tell you the, the difference on the facilities budget line is the Veragee project. There will be a correctional make to the twenty-five amended budget. When I put that together, there's two hundred and fifty thousand that was projected for the expense that did not include the additional two fifty for the match. So that'll come before you for the amended budgets, and that is why they're showing over budget currently. Yeah, I'm open to questions.
The, the expenses seem, you guys are really cutting back. Is if we only have, if this is through three quarters and you're only, you've only gone through sixty-four percent of what was budgeted for the year. You guys have really held back, so. Thank you.
Kudos.
I mean, massive kudos to the entire town staff.
Right, yeah, no kidding.
That's, that's great. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Yes, we'll move on to.
Next slide.
Well, let's, let's see what the tariffs have done to our investment portfolio.
Oh yeah, there's one more slide. No, there's two more.
Because we're not in tariffed investments yet.
Oh, don't hold your breath.
And then I have a snapshot of the revenue and expenses. If you have any questions there. Capital Project Fund, we all know is mostly Jackson Creek Parkway. Two A is the water tank and the water supply. Two F, I can tell you Chief is like on his budget, like he's our super user right now of the Castell Advantage, the budget software. And although he's showing over budget in expenditures, he does plan to use some of his asset replacement fund money from twenty-four to buy the two police cars. I think he presented at the last meeting. And then Water Fund.
So on, on the water is probably a Tom question. Actually, it is going to be a Tom question. So with, with Beacon Light, are we, are we ahead of them as far as getting the water lines done? Or are they going to just keep plowing through and we have to cut up a brand-new road?
Well, that's what we've been working pretty hard on lately with Town Attorney's Office is to get a contract in place using that same vendor that's doing the, the road project. But right now we're just trying to, it's kind of a little different than what we're used to dealing with because we're using the same contractor as the county for this project, but we have to have our own contract because we're going to require our own bonds, insurance documents for that. That's scheduled to come before you on, I believe, November third meeting. So we've got roughly about a week to get everything in place. That should give us enough time to, so that the contractor can merge the pipeline construction on with the road. Right now they're, they're at a point where they're setting up their traffic control and they're going to be doing tree removal and clearing and grubbing over the next three to four weeks.
So we've got time to, they're not going to be paving over the spot we need to run water line to.
Not, not yet, unless we have another severe delay or something, then it may impact their schedule. But we've been working with them. They're always calling me every week, asking where we're at, getting things. So we're working with the, the new attorney at Bob Cole's office, Jacob.
Jacob Crawford joined our office, I think, a month ago. He was at the City of Dan Middle and their public works contracting until they had a force reduction. So he's pretty good on his public works contracts and I know he's been working on it.
He's working diligently on it.
Double diligence.
Yeah, because otherwise our costs go up if we have to fix the road. Right?
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to consider that. That's a.
Right, that's my point. I want to make sure that we get this stuff knocked out with the I's dotted, T's crossed.
Right.
While the ground is still chewed up.
Right, we, we have the, the, the design is a hundred percent done. We're just waiting for the contracts to get in line so we can bring them to you on November third.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
And I will wrap up my presentation with just an update on the fee studies. There were two. I guess there were resolutions that came before you. The cost study is complete. We will implement those cost allocations in the twenty-six budget. One significant example is for the admin fee that we bring over from Water to cover all of the expenses that we provide to Water. That has increased from six hundred and thirty-five thousand to one point oh five two. So they, their analysis is causing us to have additional revenue in general fund from the Water. The fee study is underway. We have meetings with all departments this week. Those will be the kickoff meetings and so that'll be the next round of fee studies for the town. And then the Water Study is also underway. So making progress. I think we were expecting those to be wrapped up by December was what the projection was so that we could implement everything for the, I mean, they'll miss the deadline for incorporating those changes in the twenty-six budget. So we will put them on an amendment in early twenty-six.
But we can implement them as soon as they're done. And then you'll just.
Yeah, we just won't have the budget revenue for them.
Right, but you already stated.
Yep.
Okay.
Is, is there admin fees for Tribe View as well being looked at or do you know?
I don't believe that's being considered because of the IGA.
The IGA precludes us charging them for reviewing all of their plans and whatnot?
It doesn't, well.
Well, we charge them for those.
Yeah, we charge for certain things. Admin overhead for like the work that Steve does, we can't charge for it, doesn't preclude it, but it doesn't include it. So because it's not included, the attorneys feel that it's something we can't charge at this point. But we do for other things, yes.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
What are the costumes going to be?
About sharing what I'm going to be, you'll have to come to the drunk or treat.
I'm going to be there, but I don't. All right, thank you.
Cameras are off, right?
What, what was that?
All right, good evening. All right, so we'll run through a quick investment presentation. It's very similar to what you guys saw last time, just quarter three and updated numbers. So just a quick reminder of what our investment policy is that was set in April twenty-third of twenty twenty-three. We want to preserve and protect the investments of the town to maintain significant liquidity for anticipated cash flows. And then watch out for market, make sure that we attain market rate or return. We have diversification and we're not incurring unreasonable market risks. And then to maintain the town policies, state statutes and federal regulations. So our first one, as we get in here, is the Wells Fargo sweep account. As I mentioned, our operating count is swept down to two point five million every night. And all that money is invested at around a five percent rate and then returned to us that following morning. This happens every night for the, each month. For our quarter threes, we were doing pretty well. We were at about fifty-three thousand for each month. August was a little bit lower at fifty-two. And our total Wells Fargo is at four hundred and fifty thousand for quarter three. Our first national CDs, these are quite a bit smaller. This is just a four hundred thousand dollar CD at a four point five percent rate that we receive quarterly payments on. Right now at Q three, we're at five point five thousand. And then we get into our long list of Colorado Trust accounts. And this is just a lot of different investments that we have sitting in the Colorado Trust accounts. So for general fund, we have our twenty-five thousand year-to-date. The Monument Lake is at twenty-five thousand as well. The Water Fund revenues is at twenty-two thousand and then a lot of little ones there, including the Department of Justice at three dollars.
Okay, help me with that.
It's, it was an old account that it just has a dollar basically growing interest on it. And we just don't close it because it stays open with the Colorado Trust account.
Okay, thanks.
We, what were we going to do? Divide up three thirteen across the rest of this?
And then the other big ones are the two A Water Fund at a hundred and forty thousand and then the American Rescue Plan at almost forty thousand. So for our Colorado Trust, we're just over two hundred and fifty thousand at two hundred and seventy seven thousand. Our BACH financials, what this is, is we earned interest on our payments. If we pay a little bit early, we get interest on that payment before they make the transfer. And we've been making our payments right on time. That's why you see the last couple of months, we're forty-four dollars, forty-four dollars. For BACH total is fifty-seven thousand or fifty, wow, fifty-seven hundred, excuse me. And then Piper Sandler, this is our ten million dollar investment. On the left there, you can see it's broken down into four different times for the investments. However, I wanted to break down into a graph and show you how the ten million dollars, if we were to pull that out, would be allocated to each department. So that top one, that one percent allocation, that's your two F, your Conservation Trust Fund, the Community Development Fund, all the little ones. Water would receive majority of it at four million and then two A Water would receive another two million. Calper Projects Fund would be one point three and that would leave General Fund getting one point six million dollars. I thought this was a very interesting graphic and something to help you guys understand how that ten million dollars is actually, can be used if it were to be pulled out. And then finally, just a quick overview. Our total revenue for investments is one point one three million for the quarter three. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So we're not bankrupt.
We are not.
That's a, wow, that's so weird.
Can we have that headline?
It's just so weird how people out in the town make these outlandish claims that we're bankrupt on a regular basis.
So I'd like to go back to that, go back one slide.
Yes.
With that graph. So on the right, those pink bars. So is the, how is the interest allocated off of this? Does that go in proportion to each of these departments or this goes into general fund?
They would all be in proportion. So this is a breakdown of just the exact ten million. But any interest that's earned is going to be allocated the exact same way in the same percentile.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent, excellent work. Yes.
Yeah, I agree. Well presented.
Okay, council comments.
I have one. Aren't we singing?
Oh. Aren't we singing? I'm turning my mic off for this, but before I do, it is, there is a member of our town staff whose birthday it is today. Mr. Dan Ungleider? Happy birthday, Dan and.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you, Dan. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. Do I get the rest of the night off?
No.
You can get the rest of the night off in about an hour. Here.
Any other council comments?
Yes, just one, one quick one. Speaking of IT, I just came across an article through my, through my company account on Archis was hacked for over a year. So I sent the article to Madeline, Will and Dan. But apparently a new Chinese hacking group called Flex Typhoon hacked a weak password over to you, Will. And was able to sit on the Archis servers for over a year. And basically just run around for the past year and possibly plus, they're still assessing. So I don't know if or how that might affect us, but, or whomever else uses Archis, but there you have it.
Okay, I do have one thing, just not pleasant. On October thirteenth, we received an email from the Executive Director of the Fountain Creek Watershed District that our small municipal member submission was rejected by the County Commissioners of El Paso County. Colorado Springs, their board, their, their council members passed our, our council member Chad Smith, highly qualified for this position. The county decided to make it political by way of various excuses, making it to my purview from multiple sources. One being that Monument was financially inept at managing their funds. So therefore they did not want Chad Smith to be there in control of any dollar amounts that was part of the Fountain Creek Watershed. And then another one was that because Chad ran against former council member and beloved council member Jim Romanello, that was also a disqualifying factor from having Chad Smith sitting on the Fountain Creek Watershed. And I'm so glad the media is here to pick this up. The members of the small municipality are Palmer Lake, Monument, Green Mountain Falls and Manitou Springs. And so a letter went back out from the Executive Director to resubmit names by October twenty-seventh. What I would like to see, if the council is in approval of it, is that we write a letter to the Board of County Commissioners expressing our displeasure at their decision-making process, which is irrelevant to Councilmember Smith's qualifications. And let them know how we feel about this.
And we we, we should resubmit Chad's name?
If, if, if Chad would like to have his name resubmitted, I am happy for us to do that. I would like two members of the council to conduct the letter-writing campaign. I will forward off this email to staff to redistribute to council, so you can see the letter.
Happy to help.
And if this were to continue, it is, it is my thought that we withdraw from the Fountain Creek Watershed and we do not fund them with our money this year, even though the dollar amount has gone down as a protest to the Board of County Commissioners and their narrow-minded decision-making process. And by the way, they passed up the, the decision of their own. the, the decision of their own county commissioner who sits on the board, Bill Weisong. As well as what's, what's her name from? Councilwoman Henjim. Henjim. Right. Both recommended. Chad had the two other, two other members that had submitted their name. So.
We are the, the headwaters. Someone in this area should be on that board. Well, you know, the, the impacts come from here first. And we need to be a part of that, I believe. Then they just need to look at what's best for the Watershed District and not and not make it something that it's not.
The, the irony is that Jim would, would not have even factored any of that as, as part of a decision.
Nope.
No, right. No, they don't know Jim as well as they think they do.
They're, they're doing a disservice to Jim and his memory by, by doing, by acting in this manner.
Good point.
So do I have two volunteers that would like to take on the letter writing?
I'll help.
Okay, Councilmember Chronic and Mayor Pro Tem King, I will, you'll, you'll get this from staff and not that I think it will make any difference, but I, I think the letter needs to be written anyway.
Yes.
And at, at a meeting to be named later, we should make sure that we present it to, to our district representative as well as the rest of the county commissioners.
Agreed.
That was a good idea whoever had it.
I, I have one other thing. I know that Jim's bench, because we mentioned him, his bench has been placed. I sat on it the other day and I took a picture. It's a great. It's a great plaque and it says everything there is to say. It's, it's lovely. And kudos to Public Works. Absolutely phenomenal. Love it.
Thank you.
Are we, are we going to do any kind of event? Do we have a date in mind?
I don't believe we do.
All right, we're still getting, we have to get the family members' names and numbers to you. I've got one of the sons.
Okay.
And you've got Kelly's. I'm sure she can get everything sent to staff.
Great. If you can forward those to me, then I'll start the process.
Okay.
So back to the Fountain Creek thing. The, the representative from Esafa, I can't remember. What is her name? Amy something?
Yeah.
We should get her, we should get her involved. I think it's, I think it's Amy. Amy Kelly?
Amy Kelly. Yeah. Okay. Feel free to reach out to her if you have her contact information.
Well, I have it for sure in the emails.
Hey. So we're going to be moving into executive session. There is going to be a reason for us to come back out of executive session. Assuming that. Yes. Okay. So would someone like to read us into executive session?
I make a motion to move into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 Sub Force B for a conference with the Town Attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions. And pursuant to 24-6-402 Sub Force E CRS to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation, developing strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators regarding annexations. And, oh, are we doing individual? Do, do them both? Okay, good. And I move that we go into executive session pursuant to 24-6-402 Sub Force E CRS to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to, to negotiation, developing strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators regarding economic development incentives.
Second, and, and we'll be returning afterwards.
And returning afterwards.
Okay. Second?
Yes.
Motion in a second. All right, that motion passes seven to zero. We will take a 10 minute recess so we can clear out council chambers and then we will go into executive session. Okay, we're back from executive session. And we were able to receive legal advice and matters about negotiation of economic development incentives, including some last minute information. So question to council is, do you feel like you have enough information at this point to consider incentives? If so, we should discuss them. If not, then we could ask our staff to, to work with legal as well as the two representatives for this project Cobalt. And we can decide to have them go back with the new information.
Glad.
That having been given the new information. I like the direction it's going. I like hearing the conversation going back between the town, the state and the
Project Cobalt.
Company or organization that we've dubbed Project Cobalt for the town. It has, it does have with the incentives that we're discussing to bring them here. I think the return for investment will pay off over a period of time. And, but I would like I would like to see us go back and talk to them again, just to get some clarification on what they just sent today just before the meeting, just before we started this meeting, to get some clarification. Not necessarily say to counter, but clarify what they're saying. And then offer a discussion as well to meet some expectations.
I do have, so I have a couple of questions. My, my chief concern is I'm not against economic incentives. My concern is for the precedent. Mainly that it doesn't become a cookie cutter incentive. In other words, we're offering X and X is the only thing. I'm I know it's a negotiation for, for future entities that come. But I'm hoping that like I said, it, it doesn't become a jumping off point. I'm hoping that this will generate. And we, we've heard some, some interesting numbers. I would also.
That's your question.
Well, it, my, my question is, i- is this going to become a, a cookie cutter? I- is there a danger that this becomes a what companies expect or is it, will we have room for negotiation in the future?
I think it's great question, but I also think it's going to depend on the size of the company or organization that comes here. With this one, that's, with this one that has potential to be here, I'm excited about. But I don't, so I don't think that that will necessarily become the norm. However, it does show that the town is willing to be flexible in negotiating, drawing businesses to come here to fill these last lots that are available in Monument and hopefully generate revenue and job, job growth as well.
I think it'd be difficult to make this a cookie cutter because there's so many variables. And one of the variables is sitting right up here, you know, what comes to the council that may not look like us the next time it happens, they may consider some other things, but at least the door's been opened and I, that's kind of, I'm with you, Marco. It, it, it at least begs the discussion and, and some kind of negotiation between the town and any prospective businesses. I yeah, I, I think everything that you've said is absolutely right and my question, would be my questions as well.
Okay, so. I'm sorry, go ahead. So we don't have a general policy. It would be a lot easier to navigate this if we had some type of a policy. And this is a little bit of an exercise going through this. Because in theory, this, what this is a little philosophical, but in theory, if, if in, in a general sense, if you give incentives to everyone in order to get them here, then you have the businesses coming here on an incentive and then they're shopping at other businesses that have incentives. And it kind of snowballs to where in theory, there's no, there's no incentive for the town anymore. So I, I would just, I would feel, I would feel more comfortable if we had a, a general policy. Now, this is a, this is a good exercise and, you know, we'll navigate through this and see how it ends up in the end. So I, I think we should probably continue to some degree. But I would, I'd like to see it a little bit more standardized, just so we don't end up cutting our throat in the long run.
I like the fact that we're even considering it at all. I think it's, um, it's a good move. It sends a good message, right? It's going to be like Laura and Steve and Ken and Marco have all said too. It's, I don't think it's going to be a cookie cutter at all. I think every situation is going to be different. We have, you know, manufacturing, we could have retail, we could have services industries coming here. And I think it's going to, it's going to create a different picture every time. So I think it's very important that, because I think we, Monument has kind of developed the reputation for being anti-development. And I, I don't think that's the case at all. I think we were trying to stop some bad things or you guys were trying to stop some bad things. And I think it's time to send a message that we're willing to listen and willing to have a discussion at least. And I think this is the first step. So yeah, process agreed too. And I know staff has developed, if, through this exercise, they've developed an, a template for incentives in the future too. So we can just build on that from, from here.
Okay, so it sounds to me like the direction to staff would be to go back and have further discussion with the consultant representing the project. And then set up meetings between staff and the two council representatives. And then due to timing requirements, there's the probability that we would have a special meeting called next week in order to discuss the merits in full detail in public as to whether or not the council wants to accept those negotiations or not. Yeah.
Yes.
Are you in agreement?
I like that.
Yes. So staff understands the direction?
We do.
Okay.
Kudos to the staff for all the work that you've done.
Yes. Thank you. With that, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.